All righty, let's go and get ready to start up here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The clear republic, sovereign states, one nation, united all in the principle of liberty and justice for all. All righty, if you could do roll call, please.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan Melli.
Here.
Councilmember Hardle.
Joyfully present.
Vice Mayor Womack.
Happily present.
And Mayor Wangku.
Here. All righty, would you do the prayer for us?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Would you join me in a prayer here? Dear only Father, thank you for this day and for this week that we've had. The tragedy of our country, that's things are going on. We are proud to live in Montverde and we hope that our community doesn't become like this. I lift up those who are not here, that wish they could be here, those who are listening by TV to this afternoon, to be with those who have special needs, special problems. We ask you lift them up and be a special friends in them in time of need. Thank you for our count and staff, job they do on a daily basis. We are so honored to have them and the leadership. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen, thank you very much. All right, just moving on. All right, let's go ahead and start by reading 2025-191 resolution, please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Montverde, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the Town of Montverde, Lake County, Florida, for fiscal year 2025-2026, providing an effective date. The fiscal year 2025-2026 operating mileage rate is 2.8300 mils, which is greater than the rolled back rate of 2.6561 mils by 6.55 percent.
All righty, thank you very much. I'll open it up to the public, anybody want to talk about it? Okay, bring it back. Okay, anybody want to talk about it, council? If not, I need a motion, approve or deny.
Well, I so move resolution 2025-191 be approved.
Got a first, I need a second.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Ayes have it. All righty, if you would please, 2025-192.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Montverde, Lake County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, providing an effective date.
All righty, this is about our, the budget and the final number. And I'll open it up to the public. Okay, I'll bring it back to council. And this is what we've talked about, so council got any discussions? If not, I need a motion to approve or deny.
I actually have one quick question. When I was looking at it, and I might have missed it, but there was a Claremont sewer charge. And it went up from, it went up from 60,000 to 110. And it was on page 44, and I just was curious if that was.
Sure, yeah, the, the final half of the Willow Ridge homes will come in line. And there's still a few less than a pocket, so we're estimating those charges will go up. Plus, they just increased their rate like by a buck a thousand.
It's like for new.
Yeah. No problem, I'd answer.
All righty, anybody else? If not, I need a motion to approve or deny.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-192 as presented.
Have a first, I need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Ayes have it. Move on to the discussion items, first one, the Mountverde Academy discussion.
That was easy.
Mayor, council, real quick, I think everybody knows probably long from Mountverde Academy. We've been, what, better part of four years, been collaborating, working together, finding ways to improve and better the relationship for our community. And there's been a couple of projects we've been working on and talking about. And we kind of, just for a general discussion and a talk, we just want to chat with council and go over those. So Brad's going to kind of present those and we may have a little back and forth dialogue and just give you an update. So Brad, help.
Good evening, thank you. So obviously, I wanted to talk about, thanks for your patience for the start of school year, first and foremost. I think we've done a lot of improvements on our side. There's always continuing improvements, but I think we've done a very good job of getting those started and continue to work those out. So thank you for your patience for the first, was it week seven now, I think, is we're in of school? So it's kind of crazy we're already there. I know in the past, we've talked about parking, obviously something that Paul and I have been working on. We're continuing to work on some parking arrangements within the, the school. Some things that we've been talking with some certain departments to make sure that we are aligned, making sure that we present projects to the town that meets all the qualifications it needs to. So we're continuing to do those and improvements around our campus. The presentation you're using is seen in front of you. Obviously, like Paul mentioned, I know you guys have been talking about this at council meetings as well. Let me go to the second page. That's not my presentation, it's not blank.
Put a lot of work in that, right?
That's all right. No problem. So the first, first image you'll see on there is going to be basically the wetlands that are behind us on the south side of the campus, in the southeast part of the campuses, which is behind the Equestrian Center. Obviously, Paul and I have been working with what the town would like to do in regards to the trail slash hiking trail area. So that area is, which will be shown, is kind of like an easement area that we're willing to work with the town in doing that hiking trail and walking trail. See if it comes up. Still don't like it? I'll show it around real quick until it comes up.
So the red is, is the, is the easement that we're looking at.
That's 455, right?
So it's just really the wetlands area. The, the wetlands, this is 455, Porter Avenue.
As far as a, a walking trail? Really, you guys want to do that behind your dorms?
Dorms are back here.
Yeah.
So there's things we're talking with the town. So we're just working with the town, and obviously in that area, we're trying to figure out exactly how it's going to look, how it's going to function. Can we put something in there in regards to the next slide, which will be about, you know, the water runoffs and stuff like that on 45, stuff like that, where we could put almost like a, a moat between that walking trail, a moat and the academy? Just kind of keep it separated, keep it, you know, protected.
With gators in it.
That's your choice, but that's not mine. Not popping up, it's all right. I worked hard on this, Paul. Just kidding, just kidding. You're fine.
Wait a few minutes, he can get it going.
Yeah, I figured it out. The second page, we were talking about is obviously Seventh Street, which is basically the main drag. The red areas is kind of the stormwater collections that we've been talking, obviously with the county and the town with, for future improvements if that ever happens, and helping the easement of those areas and the right of ways of Lake County. The current area, which I think maybe some of you may not know, the green section, I think the mayor may know. The green section is an area the town, or the count, sorry, academy gave the town to use as retention pond for academy lane and some other areas on County Route 55. Do you remember that at all, back in the day? The blue area is an area that we're looking at for another easement to extend that area to help out for some of that stormwater that comes off Seventh Street as well, which is behind, which is by the wetlands. So the green and blue areas is the easement for the retention ponds. And obviously, a trail be on the other side of that wetlands area. I'm sure you.
I thought it was that.
No, that's for this. There, there is one on the bottom side, because this is a right of way.
Okay. We were just discussing the, the storm retention.
You know what I was discussing, why don't we do Truskin Park while you get, while you're working on that? Oh. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, wait five minutes, you can get that done, we can look at it while you talk. We have all the pictures with that, right? You want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah.
So, Truskin Park, this is phase two B of our stormwater project. So this is the DEP project. So phase one was Lakeside, phase two, which is running up for bid.
And phase two is currently out to bid right now, and that's Porter Avenue from Fourth Street down to First Street, and a part of First Street from the trail over to the tree. So that's phase two. Then phase two B is the park. So this is the water detention for everything that we're doing on Porter Avenue. Currently at Truskin Park, there's a small detention pond that's there, which can't handle the amount of water that's coming down there. It's overflowing, eroding. And so the solution is, is underground storage tanks, which opens up our park. So that detention area that we have there will go away and we'll have a flat surface across there. So the design you see in front of you is while we're doing the stormwater detention, and since the park kind of got knocked out with the storm and most of the trees are gone in there, we could utilize the storm money to enhance that detention area. So it's more accessible to clean and various things we need to get down there. So basically, what you see is a large, flat, paver walkway that the walkway would go on and down to a flat sitting area that would overlook the lake. From there, the walking trail would then go down to the, to the dock. So that's the concept. It's, I just have to do a high level concept with some examples before we get too far into the engineering to see if you are okay with kind of with this paver sitting area that would be at the park overlooking the lake before we go any further. If you don't like that, the other, the, the only other option would be we would just, you know, saw it over it or, you know, mulch over it or something along that line, over the, over the tanks.
So are you saying that the, from the front gate and the road is going to be flat all the way? And then have the hill wood steps, you know, landscaping steps all the way?
It would be from the, they're going to move it back a little bit, but from the back of the swing set. So there, the, what I discussed is actually just shifting it down a little bit. So you walk into the grass area, the playground area. Then you would have a kind of a step down, then a flat area overlooking kind of where the benches are back there. The current benches in concrete, that would be the flat area overlooking the lake.
So where the rear fence is now, it will start to go down? Is that where you're talking?
Um, just basically where the water detention is now, currently, it would start at that point, kind of the back of the swing set.
I don't remember where it is, it's right behind the swing?
Yeah, right behind the swings there.
Is there, is there a handicap?
It would be ADA accessible, correct.
Is that going next to the staircase? I don't see it on here, that's why I asked.
I'd have to look into that.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it probably would need to be ADA, yeah, we, we would have to figure out how to make that ADA accessible.
So it'd be staircase with ADA?
I would assume so.
And a rope?
And a rope. I, I'll have to find that out for sure, though.
This is FEMA money?
So this is the, this is the 1.8 million dollar resilient, DEP resilient grant that we got for stormwater to prevent sea level rise. And this is also a, the 375,000 DEP money that we have for a combination of 1.175 million.
And what about FEMA?
We haven't, we haven't got anything from FEMA yet. However, we're, they're finally back in contact, which is nice.
What's our estimate of billing FEMA, we're asking for?
For this?
No, just the money that we're asking for.
Um, we're working on an engineer's estimate for them right now. Probably, what I'm trying to do is get FEMA to rebuild the entire dock area and bring it up to current code and make it more commercial, sustainable. So I, I've got the engineer doing that, you know, a ballpark 250 to 500,000.
I mean from the, from the hurricane?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
250?
250 to 500,000. It's going to be somewhere in that ballpark.
What year you think we'll get that in? 2000?
I mean, we'll, we'll have an answer here pretty quick.
Yeah. I guess they're having problems in FEMA right now.
Yeah, it's actually, believe it or not, the, we, we've gotten our, I'm trying to think of, we got the federal level stuff for our recovery, for the disposal and the trees. We got that approved at the federal level, it's tied up at the state level.
Now, is this a, a grant that you have, you spend the money and get reimbursed from?
It is, that's correct.
So we're going to have that going on and, I don't know, how many else, how many other grants are going to be going on at the same time?
I mean, we have, we have 12 different grants that we're actively working through.
Right, and all of them are refunded?
Everyone of them is refundable.
So we got to get into that conversation.
Yep.
What was the dollar amount in grant money for this project?
Two grants, 1.8 million. So this, this is all three projects, Lakeside, First Street Porter Storm, and what you see in front of you. And we have 1.8 million, then the, that required a $200,000 match. We did the match with another $375,000 grant. And that 375 was the state appro, the legislation appropriation that I got two years ago.
So, and what's the projected expense of this part of the project?
We're probably thinking about 700,000.
And then the rest would be storm drains and gutters that feed to this detention area?
That's what's out for bid right now. So we're, we're putting the storm drains, kind of redoing what's existing down First Street. So kind of redoing the ponds and the piping and everything going down that crosses on First Street, or excuse me, on Porter and First Street right there.
Going to have to put up.
Carolyn, when you're able to get some of those made, I don't think we're going to, we've got something going on here.
We're going to have to put up the signs like Disney did, don't swim here, there's gators.
Look at the gators. So yeah, this, this piece is integral to the whole, that's kind of what we wrote the grant on. It was, you know, saving Lake Apaca kind of thing. So this is kind of an important piece of that grant to fulfill kind of the term of end grant. So it's, you know, I kind of, it's really kind of the discussion, I mean, obviously it's your choice, whatever to do. But, you know, do we want to do kind of a paver sitting area there or just grass over the top of it?
You want to come back to this?
I don't know if we can finish what we got, or it's up to you, mayor.
Yeah, yeah, we can go back to this.
Okay.
I just wanted to keep the time productive here. All right, come on up, Brad. Back in 1995.
We've got color this time. So we'll go back on the first page, which has basically the red line, which is the more hiking trail, walking trail that we've been in discussion with. We've been talking about the red line being a proposed trail. Where MBA would look at the easement of that area for that walking trail, which we've been in discussion about. And obviously, what we've mentioned was having a moat area potentially around that to protect the, the trail, but also the academy on the backside. Any questions on that first slide?
Is that a town trail you're making?
That, that is potentially a town trail that you've been looking at with the, the plan manager.
Yeah, we just, probably about 18 months ago, the workshop, we discussed this. So this would take an access for people from Highland to get around the, the backside of academy and end up at the sports courts. So that would, that would, you know, the end goal would be, that would be the connection piece for people that live downtown who want it to eventually get up to the new trail that's going to go over to Mineola. You know, that's kind of that long-term vision, or people that live on Alpha, back Terrace and that area. Then they can get to the downtown, you know, to the park area, trying to do that connectivity of the town.
So this is obviously just something for us, just to say that we're looking at, if that's something you guys want to do down the road, there's potential that we're willing to work with you guys with an easement.
Hey, Paul and Brad, how wide are we talking about distance or width on this trail? Have we got any kind of ideas on that, five feet, seven feet, 10 feet?
I mean, we, nowhere in, nowhere really in design, it's more just reserving the space. But more likely will be asphalt, so it'll probably be in the 10 to 12 foot width through there. So just to make it wider so people can get around. Then it'll, it'll shrink down to a sidewalk, you know, probably a six or eight foot sidewalk. I think six is what they're looking at for Highland.
Any other questions on that one? Second page you'll see, which is basically the red line down the middle with the, the blue and green sections, as we mentioned. The red areas is the right of way area for stormwater collection that may come down the road. If, if that happens with the county and the towns and us working help with that, put that together. So that's all be stormwater collection on that area. Obviously, you need a place for that water to go. So we're kind of proposing, you know, there's other easements that help out with that stormwater on the backside by the wetlands as well. Obviously, the green areas we mentioned was the area that is what the existing town and academy worked together on the own stormwater, which I believe was academy lane and a little bit of Highland Avenue at the bottom of that basin. The blue area is a section that we, we could potentially go into. I don't have what those sizes are, those are just showing in general area, if it happens, this is where it could go.
But isn't the, isn't the blue and green area in the?
To be basically on the, so the red line will be on the south side, on the bottom side of that.
So?
The trail will be basically in the, near the wetlands area.
On the other side?
Correct.
It gives you a buffer.
Correct, right, exactly. It's a low-lying area already. The trail that we've talked about in the future is raising that area. So it's higher on the one end by the, by the wetlands to give it protection. And then you get the swell on the back of the other side to keep that water retention in. Any other questions on that one? And the last page, obviously, mayor, mayor member as well. So you'll see 10th Street, this is the, pretty much the top left corner of Porter Avenue, then we have Ninth Street. The green section is a, is a parking area for the town for Lake Florence Park. I think back in 2011, 2012, I remember, we worked with the town and added parking in there with geotextile drainage for the water drain. I think there's eight spots in there now currently that the academy worked with the town to, to let that space happen. And the academy paid for, for that. We do have the red area, which I'll mention, which is the right of way that the town has currently, which runs, obviously, down 10th Street and then perpendicular up to Ninth Street. Those are areas, it's just a thought process. It's not, not usable. That is owned all by the academy around that area currently, from a couple of years ago. But those are just areas that we're looking at. And eventually, it's something one of the town wanted to look at, vacating that space. We could also additional assist with the blue space, which is additional parking if you guys wanted to put extra parking. We'd love to help out as much as we can with parking that area for that, for that, um, the park. Since that right of way, if it is vacated down the road ever. So I'm just throwing this out as ideas that we're trying to work with. Obviously easements down the road, if we're able to help out, assist where we can, maybe the town can kind of assist another way. Kind of what you're bringing brainstorming, this is nothing new decisions, these are just things that Paul and I have been thinking about down the long terms.
So what's the red?
It's the current right of way.
Yeah.
The town's right of way.
So you're requesting us to vacate the right of way?
I'm not asking you.
Oh.
This is just a brainstorming session. I was just saying in regards to some ways of, with the easements down the road of, if the, the trail goes in and there's stormwaters on the road, is there a way we can kind of trade back and forth down the road?
You know, that's the thought kind of look at, we're, you know, looking at, asking them for some right of way, basically, or easements on the backside of their property. Or they've been working with us also on possibly some water detention as we redo the 455 project all around. In addition, they've given us some more parking along there. So that area is a, it's a kind of a grass road, that's a super large hill. So I'm looking at, maybe trying to basically do a swap down the road for that land for what they're doing for us, just out of fairness.
So what you're sort of saying is, you're envisioning, envisioning, is that word, parking?
That could be, so right now, that land is, is, so basically on the, the top page on Ninth Street, perpendicular Ninth Street, that's kind of an existing parking lot. So expanding that parking that goes down, you get to a certain point, there's, there's no way you can do anything because the grade is just too steep. So that's the plan eventually to put something in that. That is kind of the next thing we're talking about, our master planning. We are working on master planning projects to come back to the town of what we're looking, we're envisioning, parking, buildings, stuff like that, so we can plan those things out in the future.
What are you going to do with this?
Unknown right now. Vision's amazing.
I was pointing.
Just had to put it on paper. The sewer plan you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're working on that.
Brad, my memory from, like you said, years back, you get to a certain point coming down, off from Ninth Street, and it really does do that, almost a 45 degree grade down through there, which is, like you said, there's nothing really can do there. And that's more of a stormwater problem, too, I think, by the old boat ramp, too. You've got erosion that kind of, that's kind of a sod drain down to the lake. So that would be, yeah.
Because eventually, there was, there was a house lot on there, everybody surely had it in there and really couldn't be built on.
Yeah.
So you're, you got the parking for the teachers' housing on the right of way.
And that was there, I think I found out from someone back in, and John may remember. I think that was even there before John got here, back in 2001. So we have no idea how that, when it was done, wasn't in my time.
So I guess we borrowed this green spot and you guys are borrowing an easement?
Or even other things I've proposed about the other easements, if that ever comes to fruition.
Well, it means, it sounds fair that we each going to borrow each other's parking area.
So just wanted to present it tonight, obviously, just put in your head that you, if you want to have more questions, obviously, we can come back every so often and give updates of where we're at on the academy side, as we want to be open as much as possible and, and work with you guys in the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, what's next? Discussion on Truskin Park, okay, we might just keep going on that one.
Yep, just the Truskin Park, finishing that up. So yeah, I'm just looking if council is okay with a paver sitting area overlooking the lake? Or would you rather keep the hill and have a grass?
I didn't understand what you're asking for.
Yeah, I just want to know if you're okay with the paver sitting area as a part of the storm project, as, to make it a part of the park, kind of creating a sitting area that overlooks the lake, which the stormwater tanks will sit under that, very similar to what we have in our parking lot over here? Or we would just put them in the ground and just cover them with dirt?
I'll tell you that next door is Jim Lay's house, and I've been there quite a few times, when there's six alligators sitting on his beach area.
Yeah, this is above, this is above the water, so it's not, there's still the drop off in the dock, so it, there's some height to it. Sure.
It's got to be pretty tall, those gators can climb a lot.
We, we are talking the top of the bluff, right?
Yeah, kind of, kind of top, but just down, yeah, it's not going down to the bottom.
Will, will there, will there be a trailer boardwalk that goes down?
There will, yeah, we're going to reconnect the dock is, is the plan. Yeah, but the lake is at, I think I'm seeing the lake, I can read that.
So you, let me understand, you're saying down here, right?
Yeah, so it's going to be, it's going to be 10 feet above the lake.
This is going to be 10 feet?
Yeah, if I'm looking at the grades. That's at, that's at an 86 right there. And it, before it even goes to the water, it goes down to a 70. So it, it looks like it's almost more than like 15 feet above the lake.
Yeah, that would be safe.
I need to, can I ask, what, what would you think on this one? Because ultimately, this is a liability issue. Do you have preference legally?
All I recommend is we put the signs that I recommend for anybody to put when you have lake property, which is, there's some language that we use, and you just put about, you know, put people on notice about the alligators in case they're not from this area and they don't know, and they go to your park. But the seating, sitting area with it being elevated, I don't think it's any more risk than if it were sod and people sit there, or if you make a nice place for them to sit. So I think it's completely up to you.
I, I've had rental property on Lake Apaca, and, and my insurance companies tell me, even though I got a fence with a four-foot chain link, if the gator calls over that lake and eats the kid, I get sued. So I sold that house.
Landowners are always going to be sued, I mean, they're just going to be part of it and, um.
Yeah, they, they're pretty blunt about it too.
Oh, absolutely, no.
What's really the difference if we lifted grass or pavers, I guess it's still going to be same height?
I think maintenance, the ongoing maintenance is probably the biggest, yeah.
Well, and the water gets high and goes low, so it gets high enough that the gator reaches up.
Right, but I guess what I'm asking is trying to understand is really if we're going to do pavers or grass, it's still the same height, to my.
Oh, yeah.
We're still at the same level, it's just going to be what the surface will play down.
Yes, that, that's, um, that's as I understand it.
I don't know, I kind of like where the dock goes way up the hill and you're coming out of the hill and you're, you're on a dock all the way down to the, and this is all, you know, nothing, you know, nothing I would walk down. But if you set that up, I don't know, you know, maybe to come up Jim Lay's side and walk up and come through and they have a party there.
In terms of, of finances, which one recoups us the most money? If we leave it just grass, which needs maintaining, or if we pave it over?
Honestly, I think it's more of just an aesthetic, what you would prefer to have that park look like, I thi- I think is what it comes down to there. You know, it's already in our mowing contract, so it won't cost us anymore, if you have pavers, you got to spray it every so often to keep the green off of it.
Leave it grass, yeah, leave it, leave it grass.
You got to cut the grass, can you get down there, cut grass?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to maintain the area above the tanks because we have to access, access the tanks.
You can just make it a beach and spray it down, mound up there.
I mean, i- if you like it, it's an opportunity using, utilizing the funds we have to create a, kind of a unique, cool looking area on the park that would have a beautiful overlook of the lake. Um, however, there's obviously an argument to be made, if you want to keep it, um, more docky and natural looking, uh, for the area, you have that argument as well, so. I, I, I do need a decision because the stormwater timeline money is, um, getting really tight right now, so we've got to move forward with something, so I need to give them direction what to do.
I, I don't know that anybody has a particular sway one way or the other.
I don't want to make the decision.
Which direction, you're looking for either pavers or grass?
Grass.
I just think, no, pavers are natural, yeah.
We'll put grass and we can change our mind later to pavers.
Yeah, yeah, just do grass.
Well, the whole dock will be designed around the pavers with the drop off, so, uh, you know, that's, that could be a two hundred thousand dollar change later, so it won't be, if we do pavers, the design will be completely different.
What's the matter with the dock we got? I've walked out a few, quite a few times.
What's that?
What's the matter with the dock we got?
It's not there anymore, I mean, it's wiped out.
Well, I mean, after you put the staircase back in.
No, it, it's fine, I, I guess the key is we're putting underground storage tanks kind of where the detention is and actually a little further and it's a lot larger. And it's, it's why we're doing that project, I guess, the, the question is we, we can create a sitting area where the accessibility to those, um, tanks are, because we've got to get to them to clean them. So, that could be a part of the stormwater project to help enhance the park if you like that, or again, it, it's not necess, you know, it's not a hundred percent necessary if you don't like it.
Maybe you're going to have this whole area here where people could picnic and hang out.
Correct.
With the play, with the toys and everything to play with there, right?
There'd be more, more sitting benches in area than the playground will be above it.
Picnic table, stay, go?
Yeah, pick, there, it will have picnic tables sitting on top of the pavers and benches, correct, maybe a swing.
All grant funded, right, is this all grant funded?
It is.
So, it's probably better for us, I think, to go with pavers down up front because that's going to be more expensive than grass up front.
Yeah, pavers will cost more.
And there's one more that is.
Yeah, but it is, it is grant funded.
How many square feet is that area?
I don't know if I know the answer to that grant.
How big is it?
It's, it's a, it's a pretty large area. I, I don't have that.
And, and the, the lower right hand corner is?
Looks like fifty by fifty.
The lower right hand corner is where the boardwalk will connect?
Correct.
And the only way to get out of the park is to go through what we're currently discussing, the finished grade seating area?
Well, people will still walk down the boardwalk to get to the sitting area, so you've still got to kind of cruise down the boardwalk, I guess.
Okay, so you can't get all the way down to Lake Apopka without going through the sitting area, am I reading that right?
The walk, you would go down the walkway to Lake Apopka. And again, this is, this is conceptual, it could look a little bit different in the final design.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It probably will, um, they just took the grades, the survey and hey, what can we fit in there to, you know, create kind of a sitting overlook area over the lake.
And it doesn't do anything in terms of the, the underground water storage tanks?
No.
No harm, no foul?
Nope.
So, this, right in, over here is where you're going to have the dock coming out?
No, so that bottom area is actually a step down sitting area, so you'll have a kind of an upper sitting area where the tanks are, then a little step down sitting area. And that's where the stairs, the other stairs will connect going down to the rest of the dock. The dock is still a long ways down. Yeah, so, so there's, it's kind of a little two tier sitting area there. So, what, a lower one and an upper.
Uh, let's pave it.
I'll go with that.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I, I see something sitting on it, a bench, a picnic table, and nothing sinks in the ground if we pave it. Or paver.
And I say paver just because it's a grant, it's grant funded.
Yeah.
Wasn't, then I would say grass. If it's grant funded.
Although grass helps keep everything cooler, doesn't generate as much heat, that's the initial feeling, but.
But you don't want a lot of people sitting on that because like Joe mentioned, it mirrors.
Does this require a motion, we vote on the, is this a vote?
Who do you think, Anita?
I mean, I think, I think just a consensus is fine. But he's going to give direction based on consensus, if you want to make a motion, that's fine as well.
Are we all in consensus? Anybody object to pavers?
What, what are we consensus about, I don't understand.
Well, yeah, no, it, bring up your slide, I don't, it.
So, we're trying to decide whether it's pavers or grass? That's it?
Yes.
So, we agreed to everything else on here?
Well, that was really.
There's really not much else to agree to at this point, so, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's it.
Yeah, I just, you know, if, if you don't, you know, if we weren't doing pavers, I probably wouldn't even brought this before you because we would have just gone.
What do we have the step down leveling for on picture of?
They're, they're showing you some examples of we're going to have to have some step downs going through there, so there's going to be some retaining walls. So, what you're looking at actually sits on retaining walls, there'll probably be an eight, ten foot retaining wall out there.
The dark red lines are probably going to be retaining walls.
Yeah, but that's probably unless maybe, I'm, I don't know what I'm okay in here, that's what I'm saying.
It's, it's going to be retaining walls.
So, so the hills that it has now is going to be a retaining wall step down?
Then you'll go back to the hill, this is the top part, so it's.
Okay, coming off the top part, it's, we're on the top and looking down.
Yep.
It's going to be stepped down, what, ten feet each time, something like that?
I mean, it hasn't been engineered, I, I don't have that.
Do you remember the original boardwalk and, and tell me if my vision is wrong, you remember how it, the original boardwalk, you went through the park and it would switch back?
Went down and over and up and down.
This will not be a switchback, ultimately, it will probably just be the graded step down, I'm assuming, till you get to the boardwalk area that takes you out over the dock.
Yeah, once you get below this flat paver area, if you go with that, then it'll have probably a switchback or two, then it'll be down.
Well, you got a staircase over here.
Yes.
So, that's just going to go down a hill.
That's going to go down.
That's not going to be stepped down the staircase, it's just going to go down.
Right, but.
Right.
There'll be a railing around there too, right?
What's that?
There'll be a railing around from the top part, right?
Yeah, I mean, code requires that.
I don't know if these pictures are good enough for me to make a decision. The way it's.
Well, there's no railing on any of the pictures, so.
No, I, I mean, it really is, it, the really discussion is a theory, you guys want to paver a flat area or do you want to just leave it natural? I mean, I, I mean, it's, we're nowhere, I don't want to spend fifty thousand dollars in engineering to show you kind of a detailed plan of everything if, if we, I'll bring it back as we go forward.
It doesn't have to be detail, I mean, just has to be, you know, a front view, a side view, and how the hill looks and, you know, and how it's going to go, what it is now and what it will be, kind of thing, I don't, I really can't get my head around this one, sorry.
Funny. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in a design time crunch, but I, I could, I could see.
I'm only one vote, you guys go ahead.
I could see what else they could put together if you guys want me to, but I'll leave that to you.
We want to discuss paver colors, right, we don't want to do that tonight, right? I'll, I'll make a motion, we'll use pavers for this area.
To what?
That we use pavers for the section that Paul's asking about, that we use pavers there.
I got a motion to pave it, use pavers, anybody want a second?
Making a motion on this or?
You could do either.
It doesn't matter, you can vote.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, we got first and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Again, say nay, nay, okay, ayes have it, let's move on.
Sorry for the confusion on it.
And, uh, next is our town manager's annual performance review, and that's what you gave us here, right?
Yeah, correct, I emailed it to you a few days ago as well.
Okay, here it is. Uh, let's see, what did it come out to? We got a four point two four out of five, pretty good. Not bad. Okay, I'll open it up to the public. I'm sorry?
Can it be made available online?
Oh, it isn't? Uh, I guess we can, yeah, yeah. You can have my copy if you want. We can put it online too. Oh, you got to come up and say your name and what you want, so we get that right, come on up, you don't want to? Okay, all right, so, I'll bring it back to council. What do you need from us on this, Anita?
It's just being presented, this is the compiled one, um, so if the board just, the council just acknowledges receipt, each of you individually did it, but this is the compiled version.
Okay, yes, all right, so this is just for your FYI, and, um, you got a, when you compiled all our reviews on Paul, you got, out of all those different, um, it was eight, there's ten different sections. You got a four point two four out of five, okay. All right, move on to the next one, it's, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one ninety-three, if you would please.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Montverde, Florida approving the fifth amendment to employment agreement between the town of Montverde and Paul Larino, authorizing execution, providing for an effective date.
All ready and everybody saw, well, I hope you seen, um, the changes that are being requested on Paul's contract, which is, let's go back here. Okay, so it's, um, you want to explain the changes, Paul?
You want to go ahead, Anita?
So, um, one of the changes is relating to, um, time that he works in excess of ninety hours. Um, the previous or the current agreement has it that he must use that time, um, within a certain period, which I think is ninety days. And that's not, he's not been able to accomplish that because of when he's accruing the compensation time and your events. Um, and so, this would instead, it would give him additional time, it'd give him a hundred and eighty days from the date the compensation time is earned, or the comp time is earned. Um, otherwise, it could be paid out to him at straight time, um, but it won't exceed in any annual year, um, fifteen thousand dollars.
All righty.
That's the PTO portion, yes, and then the retirement portion, um, the change there is, it was originally written with a certain percentage that the town was contributing to retirement. And the percentage that was set was based on what the FRS contribution was at that time. And this change would just make it whatever the percentage is that he would earn under FRS, whatever the state says, uh, town manager positions, compensation, um, percentage would be into retirement, that's what you would agree to contribute. So, it would go from twenty-nine percent, I think it's currently.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-something.
So, that everybody understands this, I didn't understand it, it took me twenty years. If, um, this, we don't decide as a city what certain positions, including the town manager, gets funded every year for his retirement, his or her retirement, the state decides that, correct?
Correct, when you're in FRS.
And there's certain positions that the state requires the towns and cities and counties to pay certain positions, so we don't even decide that. We can decide what the hourly, I mean, the salary is for the year, but that all gets into market rate. So, that's what we're discussing right now is the percentage that the state is saying that they, um, that we will agree to pay that going forward, because when Paul was first hired, um, we, he, uh, we set it at a certain rate and now we have to decide if we want to go to what the state is saying that we have to do, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's it in a nutshell. Anybody want to talk about it? Okay, bring it back to council. It's really, um, um, two percent more. It comes down to the pain, twenty-nine, it's going thirty-one, and if the state lowers it next year, then it gets lowered, if the state hires it, it goes higher. Until the contract comes up for renewing again.
I thought it was thirty-three percent.
I think right now it's in the thirty-three, thirty-four range.
I think it's thirty-three, one four.
Yeah, I thought it was thirty-one, so, okay.
Um, I had a question in reference to the days, are, is there a cap to how many days do you have for PTO? You may have answered this in the past.
You said fifteen thousand?
That, that's a cap for the payout, right?
You wanted to know what, I'm sorry?
Like, if there's a cap of how many days you can have us, or hours, I guess, the best way to put it, if we're doing.
No, there's not, um, so, he, he, any, he doesn't get any additional comp time or, under this scenario, any payment unless he exceeds ninety hours in a pay period.
Which is two weeks. Right, so if he works a hundred hours, you put ten in the back, right.
Then ten hours, yeah, he could use his comp time and take off, like flex his schedule, or if he's not able to use it within the hundred and eighty days, before it would just go away and he lost the time. We've added a provision that would allow him to get paid at his straight hourly rate, calculated on the salary, um, but no more than fifteen thousand in a year.
Okay, and then the last question I have is, and I, I'm just going to ask it, but is there, how do, how do you, how do we define those hours in a sense? And I, and I don't think Paul's taking advantage, that's not the case, but I'm just, I'm, I want to ask that question because it's something that I need to ask, but is it audible?
I think you clock in and out, correct?
Yeah, so, so I, I do clock in and out, um, for the majority of the stuff I do, not all of it. So, um, the stuff I don't clock in for is the weekend conversations I have with the council, the vacation conversations I have with the council, um, the after hour calls, you know, so if it's like, it's sometimes we run a town for water, I don't do the small stuff, so the comp time. Why, the first ten hours of my time are basically, I don't, I'm not asking for that, so we, we work an eighty hour pay period. I give you ninety hours with no additional comp time, PTO, anything, so that's kind of a, I won't say a free ten hours, but, you know, because I expect managers, generally that's what you see managers do per pay period. In addition, all those little extra calls and the stuff I do, I don't log those down, so there's probably another ten, sometimes twenty hours worth of stuff, that depends on how busy things are, you know, before meetings, it's a little busier. So, really this comp time we're talking about is Montverde's, for example, light up Montverde, um, coming on weekends to deal with the grant stuff, you know, the library is throwing some extra hours in here and there, because, you know, Montverde, for instance, um, there was one week, I think I worked a hundred and fifteen hours in the week or something, it was crazy, it was, you know, nonstop and I never, last year I lost some of that PTO, I'm just going to get it used. So, that, that's what we're talking about, just those extra big come in to do things.
Thank you, as I said to you in the past.
No, and I do, so it, it's only things that I clock in on, which is not everything.
Please do use your PTO time, you need that.
I try to, it's just, you know, sometimes it's just at inconvenient times and that, that's what I'm running into, um.
Well, the, the hundred and eighty days, have we always had a hundred and eighty days or we are extending that?
I think it was ninety.
It was ninety.
It was ninety? Anybody, any interest in pushing beyond the hundred and eighty? Just to give you a, a greater opportunity to take that, that PTO?
I'm going to put my fiscal hat on now, as your manager, I, you want to be careful, you push too far, you get into liabilities where things start showing up on audits, if you get your comp time or PTO hanging out there, it actually could create. If you get your comp time or PTO hanging out there, it actually could create a problem within our audit, so. Fiscally, I, I wouldn't say that for any employee, um, to do that, and I'm the only employee that does the comp time, everybody else, all of the other employees do get time and a half. So I'm just saying, it's comp, straight, fair, but I wouldn't push it past one eighty.
What's the hourly rate? We're gonna be at a hundred and thirty?
No.
I don't remember.
That'd be nice.
Hundred and thirty-five? Divided by.
Close to seventy dollars an hour.
Yeah, sixty-nine, something and change, yeah.
Two thousand eighty, you're using?
Yeah, so, under seventy.
What do you say it is?
Sixty-nine, go ahead.
Sixty-nine, twenty-three.
So sixty-nine point three divided into fifteen thousand is how many hours? Right, fifteen thousand's the most you can get, right?
Correct.
Divided by sixty-nine, it's two hundred and seventeen hours, divided by fifty-two weeks, that's four hours. I'm okay with that, cause you work a lot more than that, I know that.
Paul, a question for you. The biggest time literally is from, um, budget starts, we start to clock literally for you as budget, and then we run into Montverde's, then Christmas, light up, and then after it pretty much dies, we do the Easter egg hunt, but that's not the biggest blow-up, correct? So, from my perspective, you would say you build up to one eighty, we go back six months, that puts us in June. So, from June till January, basically, that's, the crunch is over, you're in the springtime, things aren't as crazy per se, so your comp time can be used there, I mean.
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Is that a, a good assumption?
That's why I kinda had it as in the option, if it works, you know, I could take the time off if I needed, if not, at least it's, um, you know, not burning me out without the pay on it, so. But yeah, you're correct, um, you know, we have the audit, we have, we have finishing up the audit, jumping right into budget at the end of the audit, Montverde, um, light up Montverde, then we're back to closing the year out, we gotta close the, like, right now, we're closing the fiscal year out, it's crazy right now, cause we're finishing up all the last stuff for this budget year, getting ready to flip it. So we have that right before Montverde, so Ja- um, really January, February, March, April, that's usually when I try to get all those little extra projects the council wants done, and, you know, the website would be example, I think we talked, I, I try to do those in the spring and the winter time, things like that.
Well, I was also thinking, uh, like with my work situation, where I work, it's like, you know, Thanksgiving's on Thursday, and then most people are closed on Friday, you don't come in, town's closed on Thursday for Thanksgiving, closed for Friday. It gives you three days or so if you wanna leave the week prior to that, it gives you almost a two-week for Thanksgiving for family and, or travel. And the same thing with Christmas, I mean, day after Christmas, everybody's closed, and you got New Year's, you know, crunch, crunch, so there's time that you could take off a week and burn comp time easily, too, and that would, that would lower it, I would think.
Well, and that, that's the issue with the comp time and getting, and I having, for like, for this year, I barely have touched my true vacation PTO time, cause the, I'm still trying to catch up from what we had at the first of the year, and, and, you know, as, as council changes and stuff, that's a lot of extra, cause we, it takes time to bring council members up to speed, depending on how much they wanna thing, not necessarily to speed, but, you know, spend time giving, you know, showing the processes and stuff that needs to get done, I think that's fair in meetings. So, yeah, those little things pop in, but really, with the, you know, the, the elephant in the room is all the projects we have coming up with the grant projects, you know, trying to keep those on track. It's, it, we have a s- small window to spend that money and, um, and get these projects done, and it's, I think it's gonna be crazy in the next eighteen months to try to do that.
Well, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, but I would assume from my experience, construction companies will close down for Thanksgiving week, they'll close down for Christmas, because nobody wants to come and work. So you've got two weeks, basically, I'm assuming that capital projects come slowing to a slowly, slow pace, because everybody's leaving your hourly rates and so forth. Construction people and so forth are taking off. Is that a, an assumption that would be somewhat correct?
Yeah, that's probably generally fair, yep.
Alrighty, so, um, any more discussion?
Okay.
No, if you, um, comfortable with it, but I need approval, if not, I need a denial.
I make a motion that we approve the fifth amendment to the employment agreement with Paul.
Got a motion to approve.
So, so second?
Now, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, say nay. As have it. And I think that's it tonight, right? Unless you guys got anything, you got anything, Anita?
No, thank you.
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Alright, that's it. Thank you very much for coming.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
We adjourn, so second, amen.
You got a motion?